At this time, I'd ask for everybody to stand for the presentation of colors from Boy Scout Troop 59, New Gilead Reformed United Church of Christ.
Color guards, advance. Scouts salute. Prepare to post colors. Post colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guards, return to the posts. Color guards, return to the posts.
At this time, I call on Pastor Donald Horn from the Revolution Church of Mount Pleasant.
May we pray. Dear most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for another day. And for a time of Thanksgiving, we just ask you to help us to remember how much we truly do have to be thankful for, that although the economy may look bleak and times are hard, you're still in control. Lord, I ask you to come here with us tonight and be with these people who have decided to stand up and take responsibility for leading our county. We ask you to give them the patience, the wisdom, and the insight they need to make the right decisions. Lord, we lift each one of them up because we know what a big burden they carry. We just thank them so much for their service. We also thank you for everyone who's here tonight, for all the people of this county, for the siren that we heard go by, for whatever they're going to, Lord, that you'll be there with them. But, Lord, we thank you, we love you, and we praise you. Amen.
If the young men from Boy Scout Troop 59 of New Gilead Reformed United Methodist Church, you'll come forward and, United Church of Christ, excuse me, come forward, tell us who you are, and if you'll go to your left, my right, for Commissioner Burge to give. You can use that one, or you can use the one right in front of you.
I'm Bryson Gray. I go to Concord Middle School, and I'm just, I just got star.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Austin Crabtree, ninth grade, Mount Pleasant High School, star.
You can go over to Commissioner Burge, and they'll give you. Yes, sir.
Garrett, Concord High School, star.
Thank you.
Walker Cress, eighth grade, Concord Middle School, first class.
Ben Barrier, Concord High School, tenth grade, and this is my last badge before eagle.
What's your eagle project gonna be? Do you know? I hate to put you on the spot, but...
I'm going to build a handicap viewpoint at the Concord Middle School.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Keith Garrett, Concord High School, and Star Inc.
Will Upchurch, second class, Concord Middle School.
George Ritchie, Concord Middle School, sixth grade, Tenderfoot.
James Barrier, seventh grade, Concord Middle School, second class.
Brock Simmons, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, fifth grade, Weeblo.
You can move that microphone down, young man, if you need to. There you go.
Michael O'Connor, Irvin Elementary, fourth grade, Weeblo.
Macklin Rhett Arbra McAllister Elementary, fifth grade, Weeblo.
Tommy Jones Cannon School, fifth grade, Weeblo.
Bryce Fuller, Irvin Elementary, fourth grade, Weeblo.
Thank you, sir. We have before us the minutes from October the 3rd and October the 17th, 2011. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. In regards to the agenda that we have for tonight, H1 is the Appointment Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. That needs to be removed and placed on the December, or into another calendar, table until December the 19th. Absent that change, is there any other changes that need to be done to our agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with a motion moving H1 to the December the 19th meeting? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next matter is, under recognitions and presentations, this is the recognition of Thomas Porter Jr., recipient of the North Carolina Farmer of the Year Award, and Swisher Sweet Sun Belt Expo Southeastern Farmer of the Year Award for 2011. I'd call on Mr. Testerman and Mr. Marshall as a presentation. Mr. Porter, if you'll come up, and I know this is not just a single effort, but a family effort, if you'll... And Mr. Testerman, if you'll let us know what this is all about.
Okay, and I'll also ask Jeff Gofer, the chairman of our Soil and Water Conservation District Board, to come up.
Jeff, if you'll come up.
This is a regional award, southeastern regional award, as you said, the porters had previously won the North Carolina Farmer of the Year Award, and at the regional level, there were eight other states, I believe, that were competing, and this is their second timeout, and this time, they came home with the prize, and we're very proud of them. There was a lot that went into the award. It had a lot to do with their business side, their management of their operation, had a lot to do with the environmental side as well. Some of you may remember that they previously received the 1999 North Carolina Conservation Farm Family of the Year Award. They've also won awards from some of the companies that they're working with, with their livestock operations, for environmental awards as well. So this is, I guess, in some ways, a culmination of a lot of these different activities, and at this point, the broadest recognition that they've had being the southeastern award. Some of you may or may not be aware of some of the involvements that the porters have in the community, and that was also a part of what went into this award. Tommy previously served as chairman of the Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation Commission, commission, under appointment by the Board of Commissioners. Also served for a period on the Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and is now currently an advisor on that board. Is also very heavily invested in Farm Bureau and the farm credit operation here in this area. Some of that's at the national level, correct? Okay, so, and then also, on Vicki's side, Vicki is our newest elected member of the Soil and Water Conservation District Board, and prior to that, actually had been appointed by the governor to serve on the Soil and Water Conservation Commission, which is the governing body at the state level, and is vice chairman of that group currently. So, having said all that, I will ask them to offer some comments to you about their place in this community.
Thank you all, very much, very proud of you.
Thank you very much for the recognition. This has been a very humbling experience, and it's a very big honor for us to have received this award. And it's a, this is my wife Vicki, this is not a, even though the title says Farmer of the Year, this is a family operation, and part of my children are here, and I would like to introduce them. Sitting back there, my daughter Erin, stand up Erin, my son Jared, my daughter-in-law Colleen, and beside her is our first grandchild Emma, and my oldest son is, I think he's on his way, Derek, but he was helping me on the farm today and had to go home and get cleaned up, and we worked a little later than we should have. But it's very much a family operation, and all of them are very much involved in the operation, and so we're very proud of them.
Now, one of the times I was out at your farm, we were driving around, and you had your daddy working, weed eating, and he's, he's not 60 years old.
No, no.
He may act like he's 30, but you had him taskmastering, making certain everything's edged right.
He was 90 years old in May of this year, and every day, he is out on the farm. Can't do as much as he used to, but he can ride the tractor, he can drive the tractor, he can mow the grass. He helps a lot. We'd have a hard time without him. He'd be hard to replace, so we're very proud and very fortunate that he's able to help us at 90 years old.
Thank you for all of y'all done. Y'all have done a tremendous job, and I applaud. I know that y'all have done a lot with the farming community, and thank you for everything you've done for Cabarrus County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is C2, is EMS personnel for victories at recent competitions. I'm gonna call on David Hampton. Mr. Hampton, if you'll please come up, EMS director.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment and recognize four Cabarrus County EMS paramedics who have won recent paramedic competitions. These four individuals have spent countless hours preparing for these competitions, and it shows the dedication that they have not only to the service, but to their self and the profession. This high level of dedication ultimately pays off to the citizens of the county every time they respond on a call to help. At this point, I'd like to call up paramedics Esther Atkins, Will Cannon, Mark Kirk, and Jeff Penninger. On October 15th, 2011, the paramedic team of Esther Atkins and Will Cannon competed against teams from North and South Carolina in the Carolinas competition, the yardstick by which other EMS competitions are measured. The competition held this year in Cumberland County was in its 15th year. After competing two scenarios in a written exam, the scores were tallied from all the teams, and Esther and Will were named overall champions. They also took first and third in the written competition. Recently, I received a call and a letter from the doctor that started this competition 15 years ago, and he stated this was the first time in its 15-year history that a first-time team had won. Esther Atkins currently serves as a field training officer with 10 years' experience, and Will Cannon serves as a crew chief with 10 years' experience. Please help me in congratulating Esther and Will for the victory at the Carolinas competition. Each year, the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services sponsors the North Carolina EMS Paramedic Competition. There are several competitions held all over the state during regionals held in July. Winners from each of these sites are invited to compete in the finals, held at the yearly EMS Today Conference in Greensboro. The Cabarrus County team of paramedic Mark Kirk and Jeff Penninger won a regional competition held in Wake County, and moved on in October 2nd, 2011. They competed against regional champions from across the state in the 21st Annual State Paramedic Competition Finals. During the scenario, the entire crowd erupted in applause as Mark, unable to locate a tourniquet from his bag, yanked the necktie from around his neck, then used it to stop a simulated life-threatening hemorrhage, and we were later told that this was the first time during a scenario during the competition that anybody had ever applauded. Then, two days later, during the EMS Today banquet, the Cabarrus County EMS team of Mark Kirk and Jeff Penninger were named 2011 North Carolina State Paramedic Champions. Mark currently serves as a field training officer with 13 years' experience. Jeff serves as a crew chief with 11 years' experience. This was the first state win for Cabarrus County at the state competitions after seven final appearances. At this time, again, help me in congratulating Mark and Jeff for victories in these prestigious competitions. At this time, I'd ask Assistant Director Alan Thompson to come up, and we would like to present an outstanding performance award to each of these personnel.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something to that, is that I work a lot, of course, across the state with counties, and what I've come to realize the last three years in doing that, and probably people don't realize it, because you see, you may not come in contact with a paramedic or an EMT on a daily basis, but this job is the most physically demanding job in county government, without a doubt, and, you know, to make it through, you know, the chance of injury is great, and you are called upon to put yourself in severe, harrowing situations, and congratulate you guys for what y'all do. So, okay.
Thank you. Next matter that we need to have recognized, I believe, or I strongly urge that we listen to, is, and I'm not gonna do it justice, it's regarding the Cabarrus Health Alliance and the milestones that they've achieved recently, and I want to call on Dr. Pilkington and Charles Phillips to come up, chairman of the board, and Cappy, if you'll come up.
Mr. Chairman, most of you know the infant mortality rate is the number of children who are born alive and die before their first birthday. The United States generally ranks 17th to 23rd in the industrialized world in that number. North Carolina always ranked in the bottom 10 in the entire United States, so we don't do very well in infant mortality, haven't since I've been here for 30 years. Fortunately, Cabarrus County has always done very well. Our rate has generally been in the neighborhood of four to six per thousand live births. This year, we just received recognition and notice that our rate was 2.9, second best in the state of North Carolina, and if you take per thousand live births, we even, we may be first, tied with Orange, and as Mr. Phillips has said, Orange County has a lot more resources than we do. We're very proud of this, especially considering the infant mortality rate as it stands throughout the rest of our country. It occurs because we have always had, as I've always said, excellent support from you as a Board of Commissioners, and we've always had excellent support from our physicians in the community and from our hospital in the community, so it's a partnership to reach this number, but it comes from the work that folks like Cappy do in our clinics every day, where we deliver about 25% of the births in this county, so we take care of a lot of the women in the county, and most of the ones we take care of are high-risk, so the burden falls a lot upon us to make sure these babies live and they're healthy, so we, I think we do an excellent job. It's nice to be rewarded, but it's even nicer to know that we have less babies who are dying in their first year of life. And with that alternative, Mr. Phillips, our chairman.
I'd just like to reiterate the point that Fred made about this being a partnership, and you can all personally be very gratified, because you have had a substantial part in this achievement, and because you have contributed substantially to public health in this county, and we anticipate that continuing, and having good results like this. This really is, I mean, Orange County has UNC hospitals, they have the School of Public Health, we're just little old Cabarrus County, and we tied them, and one of the things that's most gratifying about this decrease, not only in Cabarrus County, but also statewide, is that the greatest increase was in the minority populations. That has always been the place where we really lagged, but in Cabarrus County, we made dramatic strides, and we are very proud and delighted to be able to be with you to celebrate this achievement this evening. Thank you.
Before y'all step down, what's, what can be attributed to that? I mean, I know that healthy parents, healthy mothers, but, you know, what is the Health Alliance doing to get that mortality rate down?
She's the one in the trenches.
There are a number of things, and again, this is a community effort, but I would say our partnership with the hospital, so that if someone goes to the emergency room and has not had prenatal care, they get that woman into prenatal care through our Health Alliance, working on things like smoking during pregnancy, using the right foods through our WIC program, our WIC program contributes to that, as well as our practitioners who spend a lot of time, particularly with the high-risk women that Dr. Pilkington mentioned. Diabetes is a huge problem among our pregnant women in this county, and we have special programs that address that through a Marcha Dimes grant.
Besides the mortality rate, what's the importance of having the prenatal care that has not been happening in other counties, or that we're funding that we don't have to fund? Why do prenatal care?
Well, I work in healthcare, so I can address this pretty specifically. It's not just about infant mortality, it's also about having healthy children, because if you have sickly children, which is what you get when you don't have a good prenatal care program, the cost to the county in terms of Medicaid expenses and future support for sickly children is extremely high. The figure that I've seen is $4.1 saved in Medicaid funds for every dollar spent on preventive prenatal care. That's a pretty good return on investment, and so we anticipate continuing to have good results like this to report.
So, let me get this right. So you're saying if we're not spending a dollar on prenatal care, we can expect to spend $4.1 in Medicaid?
$4.6.
$4.6 down the road.
In healthcare costs, and that was just in the first year of life.
Okay. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Now's the time to have informal public comments. I have a card from Mr. Larry Marlowe. Mr. Marlowe, if you'll please come up, identify yourself, and let us know what you have, what your concerns are.
I'm Larry Marlowe. I live on Odell School Road. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm gonna read this so I don't forget something, so. I've been, you know, we passed a quarter percent sales tax, and I've been asked constantly, because y'all talk about property taxes going up, and people's got this confused. The quarter percent sales tax was voted on, so y'all, we owe a $5 million bond. This next year's gotta be paid, and I know we talked about that you may get half the money this year, and the other half, the first part, next year, so it's not dealing with property taxes, it's dealing with having to pay a bond off. And at last month's meeting, they talked about Carolina Trail. Ms. Strong said in her presentation that there would be no maintenance until it was turned over to the county and miles built. Also, Mr. Morehead, in his presentation, said, "At this time, we're not asking for any money from the county." To me, both statements seem to say, "We will, in the future, be looking for money from the county." We have a lot of folks out of work, there's foreclosures in the Tribune Weekly, et cetera, and I don't think the county should pay any money out to the Carolina Trails at any time in the near future. I know of a lot of, I know a lot of, I have been talking about the possibility of a $15 million shortfall in taxes money coming in this next year because of the revaluations. By the first half of 2012, hopefully enough money will have come in to pay from the one-four cent sales tax to pay off the bond, $5 million bond, and then all the money for the one-cent sales tax could go help pay for the taxes, property taxes that you may not get, and that could be some money to help lower if the taxes gotta go up. Where I worked at a child observer, we used to have to do a budget once a year, and I'm sure the county does too, and we would drill from one end to the other why we needed this and why we needed this, and if we ever got it passed, then they would come back later to advertise and said, "If we don't make the money we think we're gonna make, gotta reduce your budget another 10%." And at that time, you really had to cut, and you had to explain what you were cutting. So there's all kind of possibilities that could go into that, and I know you'll do everything you can without raising property taxes next year. Thanks for all your hard work. I know it's not easy for everybody to be pleased. Happy Thanksgiving.
One thing, Mr. Marlowe, is that just, I can talk at the end of the meeting, but I think it's important, you can sit down, but I think it's important to address it now, is we're not having a shortfall. We are coming in on budget, if not under budget, so we're not gonna go over our budget. So wherever you heard about the $15 million, I don't, I'm not certain where that is. In regards to the Carolina Thread Trail, we were not asked to spend money on the Carolina Thread Trail, nor are we going to be spending on any money. The cities are spending money to develop the Thread Trail, and the quarter cent sales tax, we just started, it started being collected October 1st, and those monies are gonna start being, turning into the county in the near future. We have not gotten those numbers yet, so I think that addresses the three points that you have, and the quarter cent sales tax is for school construction and school capital expenses, or remodeling, that is gonna be used to pay that down, so wanted to make certain we got that addressed early. We have the consent agenda before us. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next matter is the new business, and on page 346 is the Library Eagle Scout Project at Mount Pleasant Library, and I'll call on our library, oh, we'll not be calling on Mrs. Ur.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Reese, and I am the manager of the Mount Pleasant branch of Cabarrus County Public Library, and I'm pleased to introduce Ben Greason, who is an Eagle Scout in our community, and I'm pleased and so proud that he has chosen the Mount Pleasant Library as part of his Eagle Scout project. So with that, I turn it over to Ben Greason.
Good evening. My name is Ben Greason, and my Eagle Scout project presentation and proposal involves the placement of a flagpole at the Mount Pleasant Public Library. There currently is not one there, and I feel that providing one will promote the symbolism of our freedom of speech and to commemorate our veterans. If there is any questions about this project that you have, may you ask them now?
Any questions for Ben? Ben, you need to talk to Commissioner Carruth. His son, his eagle project was to put a flagpole up at one of the churches here in town, in fact, the church he goes to, and I'm certain that Commissioner Carruth spent a little bit of time doing some sweat equity in that, helping it get it up, so I think it's a great project, and I think it'll be a very good project, and I hope when you get it done, we'll get to see the unveiling of it, if there's an unveiling, or whatever you choose to do, and the library chooses to do, but thank you very much for what you're gonna do.
Thank you for my time.
One question I've got, is that, I know, obviously, it's not free to put the flagpole up. Do you need, so many contributions to fund putting that flagpole?
The total price I came up with is about $500.
Okay, so, and...
How are you gonna pay for that?
I'll send out donation letters to friends and family in the community, and if that doesn't pay for it, then I will have a presentation at either my church or the church of my Boy Scouts and ask for donations there.
Where, if you wanted somebody to mail you money, who does it need to be made out to? Doesn't he mean made out to you, or to whom?
I'm Ben Ziegler, advisor. It would be made out to Boy Scout Troop 5, Cold Springs, 2550, Concord, 28025.
And that would be Mount Pleasant?
Yes, sir.
Concord, 28025. Okay, so let me get this right. If anybody wants to mail you a check to help cover about the $500, it would be to, made out to Boy Scout Troop 5, Cold, 2550, Cold Springs Road, Concord, 28025.
Correct. Attention, Eagle Project.
Attention, Eagle Project. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you very much. I do not believe we need to, oh, we have to motion, we have a motion to approve this project that Mr. Greason, Ben Greason, will be taking on. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next that we have is approval of the, approval of the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission Grant, $75,000. Mr. Marshall.
Good evening. This is a grant from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission for $75,000 to, it would be to... for $75,000 to, it would be to Cabarrus County, but it's a project the Cooperative Extension Department and the county are working with the Piedmont Farmers Market Board on to enlarge their facility at Wyancoph, to actually build another building and for some site work necessary for that, including parking, drainage, those types of things. Mr. Daryl Mall, who's the vice president of that board, is here this evening. If you have any questions of him, or I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about it.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Is any of this money taxpayer money?
This money is the result of a settlement with the four largest tobacco companies. It dates back to the late 90s. It was money that 46 of the 50 states agreed to, or settled with those tobacco companies, and this is money they've been paying over a 25-year period. It does go through a commission at the state level, but it's actually paid by those private companies.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the grant award and authorize interim county manager and county attorney to execute the contract between North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission and Cabarrus County and adopt the related budget amendment and project ordinance?
Same move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Say.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we have is G3, is Authorization for Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District to approve grant contract with North Carolina Department of Agriculture. Mr. Marshall, will you be handling this?
I will be, and with help if you have any questions. This is an agricultural trust, agriculture development and farmland preservation trust fund grant for $175,000 that has been awarded to the Cabarrus Soil and Water District and the Porter Family Farm. This grant does require that we have some match that is minimal in our soil and water department's budget and is already built into their budget, as well as a substantial match from the Porter family themselves. The grant is for $175,000, and it's estimated that their services and what they are bringing to the project is equal in that value of $175,000. And we are, the soil and water and the Porters are also applying for a grant at the federal level for $350,000 that we hope to get also, using this as some leverage for that. The purpose of this is to create a conservation easement on some acreage that they have, in this case, 54 acres. Ultimately, they'd like to protect another, more than double that with 117 acres, and then also use the proceeds from this to buy additional land to help expand their operations. But the main goal is to preserve their farm to, from, you know, as there is development pressure throughout, to preserve the farm and to promote its continuation. And again, of course, the Porters are still here, as well as Jeff Goforth of the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall?
Yes. In the purchasing of other property for this, is that one of the requirements of this, the process?
That, this is actually for the, for the conservation easement itself. I believe that's more the Porter's goal, is to then use that to purchase additional land, but perhaps.
I didn't know if that was.
They don't have to purchase land.
Okay. I didn't know if that was part of the process.
It's not a requirement, but that is our, that is our goal, and I wish it's.
Any other questions?
Is there a limit on how long this has to be set aside for farmland?
This is a permanent conservation easement that they'll be placing on this property.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion to accept the grant award and authorize, authorization for the interim county manager, county attorney, and soil-water conservation district to process and approve the contract as appropriate.
Same move.
We have a second?
Say.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we have is appointments to boards. As we talked about earlier, H1 is being tabled until the December 19th meeting. H2 is with the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to appoint Diana Bingle to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending November 30th, 2012?
Same move.
Do we have a, we have a second?
Say.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is, I do wanna call everybody's attention to the reports that we have. We have a report from the presentation of the 2011 Piedmont Behavioral Health Report, the Library Annual Report, and especially the Council for Sustainable Local Economy. They had a fantastic retreat, I understand, recently, and I thought it was very good. I'm sorry, I couldn't get there, but there's a lot of good things in here, so I'd encourage everybody to look over it.
Back, Mr. Chairman.
And go back, we have a presentation from the Piedmont Behavioral Health. Is that correct?
No, it's a presentation.
Okay.
This is a dashboard report.
Okay.
Oh, do we?
Oh, Mr. Yow, come on up.
I've been on the board 11 years, I'm sorry.
Supposed to have somebody giving me a little poke in the side when I pass over something like that, Mr. Yow, I'm sorry. Tell us about it.
I know, I'm sorry.
Page 408 of our, of our agenda.
Yes, my name's Aniyan. I'm the director of the PBAH Community Operations Center, and I oversee the operations for the mental health, intellectual development disabilities, and substance abuse services for five counties, including one of those is Cabarrus County. And, okay. What the dashboard report shows is the county funds for Cabarrus County, how those are being utilized. This is for the first quarter in the fiscal year. I'll go over those briefly. The Crisis Recovery Center for Meds, individuals that don't have healthcare and not eligible for Medicaid. County funds help support those that may be in a mental health crisis, substance abuse issues that do not wanna, it's an option of, instead of having to go to the emergency department, it does offer an option. It's also a lower cost. And also, emergency backup, medication assistance for those that can't afford it. Advanced access are those that may not be able to wait for an appointment for a mental health counselor. They can walk in, provides that support, as well as after-hours for emergencies. This is number of consumers served in Cabarrus County. I think you can see that very well. Those numbers, we have total, as well as Medicaid and state, those that received Medicaid funds and state funds.
Any idea why it's going down?
Depending on.
Because that's a significant drop from August to September.
Right. Depending on the service, if it's a mental health service, typically those are short-term. And so they may receive, at times, those may be higher. You may see those go up, particularly in the holidays. Those numbers will increase. A lot of times in the summer, they'll go down. For the Registry of Unmet Needs Innovations, this is a very high-cost service, but it's for those that are at the highest risk, for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities that may be at risk for institution. That is specifically a Medicaid waiver. For those waiting for residential services, specifically to Cabarrus County, but then it also shows the total number waiting, that doesn't necessarily mean we don't have vacancies. Someone may be waiting for a certain home and may decline other vacancies. As well as for ADVP, which is Adult Day Vocational Placement, that's your workshop setting, are those waiting for that, and that is state funds solely. There is pie chart in regards to those served by service. If you see outpatient is the highest served within the county. It's also comparatively, when you see below, the expense is much lower because it's a short-term service. Whereas if you see innovations, it is a short number of people served, but it's one of your higher cost. Oh, I'm supposed to be doing the arrow. Sorry. You also have distinct numbers served within your county, as well as the expense by service category. And again, you'll see outpatient is highest for those served, but for cost is innovations. And the last page just shows the top providers within Cabarrus County, the numbers that they've served, as well as claims that have been reported. And that is actually through August Any questions?
What is independent opportunities? Is that an organ, is that a provider?
It is an agency. They serve specifically those with intellectual and developmental disabilities.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Yon.
All right, thank you.
Let's see here. I do need to make some comments. It's come to our attention that there is some, unfortunately, there are some people that are preying on some of our residents in regards to a possible scam whereby an unauthorized company is calling homeowners, saying that they need to inspect their homes or their roofs on behalf of the county. Please do not fall prey to this. The county does not inspect roofs of occupied residences unless the homeowner themselves request assistance. So if you do not request the assistance, there's nobody on the county's behalf should be calling you to inspect your roof. Also, the, there are some holiday follies out at the senior citizen, senior center, Mount Pleasant, in Concord and at Mount Pleasant. And this is on November 29th at 7:00 PM at Mount Pleasant High School on Walker Road, 7,000 Walker Road. It's a variety show featuring singing, dancing, and comedy routines. And there is a fee to attend, but please consider going out to there. And finally, the county is, has a angel tree that if you are able and willing to select a tag from one of the trees for some underprivileged people, then we would ask that you consider doing that. You can get one here at the governmental center, you can get it at the senior center in Concord, the senior center in Mount Pleasant, and the four libraries at Concord, Kannapolis, and Mount Pleasant, and Harrisburg. And the gifts need to be backed by December the 8th so that they can be forwarded along. And with that, I also want to send out some congratulations. If everybody did not get a chance to see it in the Cabarrus neighbors, the Odell Eagles, it's a very good team that is going down to, the cadet-level football team is heading to Orlando, Florida, to compete for a national championship. And I think that hopefully by December, we'll know the status of it and how they did, and so we can get reported back, and hopefully the team can come in here, and we can congratulate them for the hard work, that they go down to Disney World and, or Disney, and compete for a national title. So that's fantastic. With that, Commissioner Poole, do you have?
I do. I, you know, we all have our different boards that we're on, and I'm on the MPO or the Roads Board. I always pick with people. When you're a county commissioner, people think this is, that we learn all these exciting topics. I've learned a lot about sludge, and I've learned a lot about roads and bridges and railroads last week. So there, there's some funds that have been received in North Carolina to work on the railroad from Charlotte to Richmond. And of course, what we would be worried about is where it's going through in Cabarrus County. There are two meetings coming up. If you are in the Kannapolis area, China Grove area, anywhere up there, December 5th, there's a meeting at the Kannapolis train station. They will have maps. There are a number of at-grade crossings that are being proposed to be closed, and some rerouting of roads, some overpasses and underpasses. Of course, the, the most dangerous places of a railroad are where cars are crossing it straight over the tracks. And so there's, I think it's something about 500-some million dollars North Carolina has gotten to work on the railroads. There could be a number of closing, like I said, a number of areas closed, also with the expansion of I-85. That could impact Ridge Avenue, if you know that, that you've got 29A and the railroad tracks in Ridge Avenue. So there's some discussions on that. Another big area for the railroads to be concerned about is in Harrisburg. So if you are in the Harrisburg area, there is a meeting on December 12th, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Marshall? I'm pretty certain it's December 12th, though right now I cannot remember the location. It's the same meeting, same type meeting, but just like in Kannapolis, China Grove area, there are at-grade crossings in Harrisburg that are being proposed to be closed, and a number of new roads put through, especially if you think about where Lowe's Foods is. Right now, you turn to the, beside Lowe's Foods, and then it cuts to the right, and then cuts down Hickory Ridge. That's an at-grade. They're looking at closing that one and actually putting in a different road where that road juts to come behind Lowe's Foods. It would go straight from the map I looked at and tie in at Stalling's Road and be completely different. So this is an opportunity for anybody to go and see the maps, ask lots of questions, and make sure you understand how that will be impacted. It's not immediate, obviously. Construction takes a while, but they are under a tight timeline on having to spend the funds, or the funds would revert back, and I don't think they want that to happen. So there's also a meeting, I think it's the 13th, that's more up in Charlotte to kind of hit that area in Harrisburg also. But December 5th in Kannapolis, it's either 6 to 8, or 5 to 7, but it's in that timeframe. Same in Harrisburg. If you need some information, I'm sure you can call here, and we can make sure I get that to you so that we can get that information out. But I would encourage folks, especially in those communities, to go and look at the maps. It's very interesting to look at and, and make sure that your voice is heard as far as the railroads go. We don't control that at all. I'm sure we're gonna have our chance to express some concerns about some of the proposals that they have, but would like to encourage everybody to go and go to those meetings.
Any others? Commissioner Carruth?
Got a couple of things. One of them, first of all, on the subject of boards, and we have, I mentioned it at the end of our last meeting, but we've got, even though the APAC has not met over the last several months, there has still been some work behind the scenes going on. I think Mr. Ann Cannon and Mike Sims from the Humane Society have been working very hard and diligent to put together a proposal for this board. Last time we, if you recall, we discussed it, we had wanted some more details, and asked for more details on that. And I'm happy to report that there's, you know, very close to coming up with a plan of, I would guess probably the proper term would be reorganization, rather than creating something new, because there's already in existence pieces of a program involving animal services. And one, actually one of the things that was discovered in all our discussions that have been held, is that the Humane Society right now is spending about $4,000 a month of their funds to clean our shelter, which is very interesting. But, you know, being a public shelter, they're, they've taken that on and are doing that. So there's, what we're looking at is some ideas that'll be put forth, and if we get this thing refined, I'm thinking by next month or the latest January, of having something more concrete to bring back to this board. And knowing and being very sensitive of the fact that funds are low, but that we also have ways, I think, we can carve out and find the money to reorganize, make the operation more efficient at the animal shelter, and thereby, I think, in the long-term, save money for the community and the, and how we handle the stray dogs and cats that come into our shelter. So.
Any others?
If we, in the goodness of our heart, when we give the Humane Society some money, we can. But they are doing a great job as far as keeping our shelter clean for us. So, and I do have one other thing.
Okay.
The, I just got a few comments to make, and I wanted to share this with the, the community. I felt it's probably the best place to do it since we, but beginning in, coming up in February, the election process starts anew. You know, next month, we'll elect the chairman. We'll have chairman elections, and Christmas time is upon us. And then, before we turn around, it'll be February, and it'll be the filing season will open for next year's election. It's hard to believe that we're already facing another biennial election. We'll see incumbents and newcomers both throwing their hats in the ring next year, and with hopes that the citizens will allow them to serve this community in elected office. And looking forward for myself, I've been prayed about it, discussed it with my, with many folks, including most of all my wife and my now-grown children, that I've made the decision not to seek a fourth term for your commissioner in 2012. The, I wanted to make this announcement now, like I said, because we're getting into the holiday season, and it gives time for those that may be wanting to run for commissioner, time to make up their mind about doing so. But the, of course, with this decision, then I'll be on the board until next year when my term is up. But next December, when. But next December, when new commissioner is elected, then I'll, I'll be finishing my time as a commissioner, is finishing up my third term. It's been challenging, I would say the least, to balance a full-time career, be a husband and father that I need to be, and still serve the community in this role. I'm looking forward to other pursuits over the next few years and still plan to be involved in the community in other capacities. In two thousand, having only lived here for five years, decided, after seeing some of the issues that we had in front of us, to, to get into the game. And when I was first elected eleven years ago, it's amazing, because I think back, that Politeks and Philip Morris were still operating. CTC was our telephone company, and Northeast Medical Center was an independent community hospital. And this is just indicative of the change that has done, taken and placed in this community. And we've seen the tremendous growth and the tremendous change in these years is, have went by very quickly for me. I wanted to thank the board here, because this board appears on this board and served, counted how many commissioners I've, actually, individual commissioners I've served with, but twice this board has, has seen fit to let me serve as chairman and as vice chairman. And I've enjoyed those challenges that, certainly some challenges that we had when I was chairman, as we got through building the, our new public safety center that's here in downtown, helping with the rebirth of Kannapolis, and, and really seeing the growth and solidifying the growth of the leisure and travel industry in our, our county. The, it's been a great ride, and if I make it till next December, and we're still on this board next December, I'll be one of, I think, only two commissioners that have served for twelve consecutive years, and that would be myself and Koi Privet. And the other two, Carolyn Carpenter, who I think has three terms, but they were non-consecutive, and Mr. Barnhart, who was, Jeff Barnhart, who resigned after his tenth year to go to the NC House, so. But like I say, it's been a great ride, but it's time for fresh ideas from other folks and a change of scenery. I guess I could interject the old adage that politicians like dirty diapers, you need to change them every now and then because they get dirty, but the, but it's time to step back, catch my breath, and see the world in this community from the perspective of a private citizen again, so. That's it.
Any others?
I'd like to remind everybody, that may not know, this Saturday at four thirty, the City of Locust is gonna dedicate their new city hall, police department, and library. It's a big event for Locust.
Okay. One last thing before we go into closed session is that since our, I don't know if this, I believe it was since our last meeting, Larry Griffith passed away, and he served for a number of years on the Planning and Zoning Board. I think he chaired that board for a period of time, and he will certainly be missed in the community. And, you know, it's, it's a sad day when we have to announce that, but, you know, I, it just, I know he meant a lot to the community, and the community meant a lot to him. So, with that, it certainly is, is, sorry to report that. We have a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters and to invite Mr. Downs into that meeting. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. After the closed session meeting, we will be adjourned in the meeting.